Well, good morning. My name is Roger Hall. And I welcome everyone to this trustee candidate forum. Questions for the candidates for the Allen Hancock Board of Trustees. My first guest is incumbent Jeff Hall. Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning, Roger.
We were saying, we talked four years ago with an audience, a little different setting.
Right.
But here we are again. And so why don't we just get started?
All right.
Take as much time as you'd like to answer the questions. We have about a half an hour.
Okay.
The questions are from a variety of groups from across the campus, part-time, full-time faculty, the CSA, some students, and management associations. So what are your qualifications and experience to serve as trustee?
Oh, good morning, Roger. We're not, before I get started, we're not related, by the way. His name is Hall and my name is Hall. Okay, qualifications are, well, my qualification, my greatest qualification is I am the experienced candidate. I'm currently in the position on the Board of Trustees, and I'm doing the job every day. So that's my best qualification.
Okay. What would differentiate you from a competitor in this race? If you can be specific with some examples, what would you bring to the Hancock community that would be positive?
Well, as I said earlier, I am the experienced candidate. I'm currently doing the job. As a member of this team, we have met the needs of the community. For example, this building we're currently sitting in, this is the fine arts complex that we know right now. But we're building a new one. And as a member of the Board of Trustees, we were innovative in securing funding to go forward to start this project, which we're going to break ground tomorrow. And so that's part of my qualification. I bring the experience to the board and with the ability to make things happen.
Okay, thank you. What motivates you to be a trustee?
Well, it goes back when I was a little boy. I grew up in Louisiana down south when America was segregated. And at that time, opportunities for an African-American were very limited. So my family uprooted and migrated out west here to California so I could get an education to have a better success in life. And so I want the same experiences and opportunities I've had to succeed because I went from, I was picking cotton as a young boy in Louisiana. So I went from the cotton fields to college in my lifetime. And right here, you have the same type of fields, not cotton fields, but you have strawberry fields and broccoli fields. So I want the citizens in this community to be as successful as I have. And that's my passion and that's what motivates me to be a trustee here in our district.
Thank you. What goals do you have for the campus as trustee that have not been done before?
Well, one of the goals I have is to diversify, a more diverse faculty. Because right now, we have been designated as an Hispanic-serving institution. And if I'm not mistaken, I might be wrong about this, but the fact, the diversity of our faculty is, I think, less than 10% of the faculty is of Hispanic origin. And so I want to improve and increase that diversity here on our campus.
Okay, thank you. I think this is a question that a lot of people have. How would you like to communicate with your constituency groups? As a board member, how do you like to communicate to get forward your ideas or solicit information from people?
Well, right now, we hold town halls, I think, every other month for the students and the community here on all three of our campuses, in Lumpok, right here in Santa Maria, and in San Ynez. So I want to, instead of making that periodically, I would like to do that every month in order to get my message out to the community and to the students and to understand and listen to what their concerns are and what their needs are. And I attend as many functions in the community as I possibly can. So I am currently on the Allen Hancock Foundation Board. And so, and that's community outreach right there. We attend all kinds of community functions. And I act as an ambassador for the college when I'm at these different events.
Okay, okay. One of your jobs as a trustee is to evaluate the president, superintendent. What criteria weighs most heavily in your mind when you're evaluating administrative performances?
Well, the most, the number-one criteria I look for when I'm evaluating the president, because that's the only person that we supervise, oh, actually, we don't supervise him. We act in partnership with him. I look at his leadership ability, his effectiveness as a spokesperson for the college, and consensus-building skills because he has to bring all these different factions together, the faculty and the staff together as a unit to accomplish the goals and the mission of our institution. So I look at his leadership ability. And I look at how well he plans and accomplishes the goals of the organization and his ability to establish priority and follow through with these priorities. And his relationship with us, the Board of Trustees. You know, you have to have a good relationship with the board. And how he communicates, keeps us informed, and we're not in the dark on what's happening here on campus, that communication between him and the board. I look at that, that's a very important criteria for him to have. And also, I've heard stories about board meetings at other institutions. I look at the conduct of the president, superintendent during board meetings. Is that a good thing? Is he, you know, treating everybody with respect? And so all these are important criteria that I look at when I'm evaluating the president superintendent.
Okay, okay. This question's a little bit longer. So let me just read it as it is here. It's been 11 years since classified employees have had a raise. We haven't gotten a COLA, a full COLA funded by the state during that time. We have employees who take home pay can be $1,600 a month due to health insurance. CSA, the group that I'm referring to, has been told that the Board of Trustees will not accept a "need-to" clause that would foster base pay equity among all the groups. What will you do to remedy this non-equity issue?
Well, we're currently in negotiation, if I'm not mistaken, with the CSA union. And ever since I've been on the board, we have really answered all of their demands. It was satisfactory to their leadership. And if I'm not mistaken, they pay less in insurance than the other, like, full-time faculty, staff, and the other unions. So I think the board have been fair with CSA. And we try to do our best in keeping everybody satisfied and equality among all three unions. And we have to also remember that our first priority is the success of the students here. We have to keep our institution in the black, so to speak. So we can't give everything to, you know, certain employees and take away from students. So we have to bear that in mind. So as a board member, I would continue to work with the representatives of the classified staff to ensure that they are treated as fairly as possible.
Okay, well, thank you for that. The college has a mission, a mission statement. What makes the Hancock mission meaningful to you as a member of the board?
Well, the Hancock College mission statement is meaningful to me because I firmly believe in its mission. We have a slogan here, "Start here, go anywhere." And that's been true since I've been on the board here. And so I'm, you know, I'm very well in tune to that. I'm highly supportive of this mission. And it goes right into what our duties and responsibilities are as a trustee. Our main goal and mission is student-centered. We are to ensure that students are successful. And so the mission, the mission statement says, "Provide quality educational opportunities that enhance student learning and the creative intellectual, cultural, and economic vitality of our diverse community." Well, we, and that's meeting the needs of community. And we're doing that as a board. I mean, we established the PROMISE program. And what that does is that provides free college tuition for one year of high school graduates in the district. So, you know, things like that, we are, you know, implementing and keeping our philosophy of the mission here at Allen Hancock.
Okay, okay. I think you've answered some of this, but there was a question of how you would actively promote Allen Hancock College in the community. I know it was part of your answer. You said you did community outreach. You attended a lot of functions. Is there anything else that you would do or would like to do?
I also said town hall.
Town halls?
Yeah, we, you know, I currently hold town halls about every three months or something like that. But I would like to increase those town halls to have them every month, you know, and just alternate between different campuses from, you know, this main campus here in Santa Maria to Lumpok and to San Ynez. So I would like to increase those. That way, I would know directly, I would hear directly from the students what their needs and concerns are.
This is a question that a lot of people have about goals. If you're re-elected, do you have a formal, informal list of, say, your top three goals for the college?
Yes, yes. But with my goals, I have to remember that I'm part of a team. So any goal I have has to be a team effort. One of the, I, three, four years ago, almost four years ago now, I ran on making college free for students here at Allen Hancock. Well, I accomplished that, but it was only for one year. So my goal, if I'm re-elected, which I think I will be, is to increase that from one year to two years. And in order to make that happen, we have to have $5 million in the bank, so to speak, to make the PROMISE program viable for eternity, where you don't have to worry about it. Right now, we have three and a half, I think, three and a half million dollars that's been raised. And so we need a million and a half more. And so one of my goals is to go to the public because this is public-funded. This is not money coming from the government. All these are public funds that support the PROMISE program. I would like to, you know, get that one and a half million dollars more that we need to make this program viable for eternity.
Okay, okay. Is there anything else that you see as a need to improve in the college?
Yes, I said earlier, I think I talked about this earlier, we need a more diverse faculty. And so we need to recruit and retain a more diverse faculty. So I'll be talking with the president about that and see how we can accomplish that. So that's another goal of mine that I would like to achieve during my next term.
Okay, okay. This is another, a little more specific question. So many of the employees in the, are, in the community are involved in public organizations and charities. Do you feel if you were personally involved, this would create any bias toward any specific group that provides special funding or special treatment? Or I guess, in another way, how would you avoid bias in terms of making funding decisions and special treatment?
Well, in a sense, some people may look at it like that. But I'm a, I'm a person of color. And the community that we currently live in here, I think we've got, what, 60-some percent of the demographics is of Latino origin, then forty, then about forty, about 38, 39%, I think, white Anglo, then others. And so everything I do as far as fundraising and being an ambassador for the community is geared toward our district, which those are the demographics. So I don't think it's too much credence to me showing bias to one group over the other.
Okay, okay. Well, I want to, I want to thank you. Those are the questions I have. But I wanted also to give you an opportunity, if there's anything you wanted to add or kind of a closing statement?
Well, as I said earlier, you asked me a question about what makes me better qualified than another candidate? And I said, "Experience." Well, that's true. And there's an old saying, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." And so as part of a team that's been very successful for our district, I think we should keep this team in place in which I'm the current vice president. And so re-elect me, and good things will continue to occur in our district. And again, I thank you for your time and thank you for inviting me to participate in this forum.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Hall.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right.
All right.
Well, welcome again. I'm Roger Hall and this again is the Allen Hancock Trustee Candidates Forum. My next guest is candidate Carrie Commons. Hi Carrie.
Hi Roger.
How you doing? We were saying how nice it is to see people in person. We are of course socially distant so not wearing our masks. So why don't we get right into it? What are your qualifications and experience to serve as trustee at the college?
Wow, well, first of all, I just recently have resigned my position as a payroll technician at Allen Hancock College. I was here for 12 years. So I think being a very recent employee is putting me in a position to be a great candidate for a board of trustees because I have a very great knowledge of what the college is all about. The payroll position is a great position to have at the college because you see a lot of things going on with the college. I was also a member of the Sustainability Committee, the co-chair of the Sustainability Committee. I worked on the Facilities Council. We did a lot to improve the college. I think that being part of the college for so long, I was able to see a lot of everything that happened with the college and I have a great perspective that I can bring to the board. I ask a lot of the questions that maybe the board might not have the knowledge to ask so we can make informed decisions based on the questions that maybe an employee might have the knowledge to ask. I'm also a parent of a graduated student. I have a student that's going to be coming in in the next couple of years. I was a student myself. I was a student worker. There's a lot of different aspects that I have that maybe somebody else that didn't have all of these different experiences had. So being the employee, the student, the student worker, all of these different things is a great asset to be on the board. And then my current position as a payroll manager for Santa Barbara Unified School District, I'm still very much within the education system. I still have the fiscal responsibilities. I'm still very much up to date on all of the fiscal responsibilities of an education system. So being able to have that play into the rules and responsibilities of what an education system needs to do is very helpful as well.
Okay. What motivates you to want to be a trustee?
Sorry, I'm referring to notes because I'm going to forget everything if I don't. So first of all, the love for the people at Allen Hancock College, the students, the faculty, the staff. I really, really did fall in love with the institution from being a student back in the 90s to being a student here in the 2000s and as an employee. There's just a lot to love about this institution. We have a great presence here in Santa Barbara County and San Luis County, all along the central coast. Also as a mom, I want to be able to have what I had for future generations to come, my kids. I was able to be a student here and then come back and flourish as an employee and be able to grow and learn and move on in my career. And I want the same thing for the younger generations. I want to be able to help shape the future and being a trustee, I should be able to help do that.
Okay, thank you. What goals do you have, would you have as trustee that have not been done before?
So again, as a recent past employee, I'd love to be able to be a part of making new policies, implementation and policy change. So for example, policy of employee advancement, recruitment and retainment. I know that we have great employees here and I know that we need to retain those employees with competitive salaries and I think part of that is we need to make certain policies where they need to feel that they have the opportunity to flourish and grow within the company and sometimes they just don't feel like they can do that. Also, I know the board needs to maybe have some term limits and I know that having fresh ideas come through is a great way to do that. So I think maybe putting some term limits on boards might be a new policy that might be a good thing to do.
Okay. You may have answered part of this but I'm going to give you another if you wanted to elaborate. What differentiates you from your competitor in this race? If you can be specific with examples of things you think would bring a positive result to the Hancock community?
Well, again, being a very recent employee, I am very up to date on a lot of the stuff that's going on here still. Then I know the college inside and out and I don't think my competitor really has a grasp on what an employee really feels like. I know she was an employee here a long time ago and being an employee here now is a lot different than being an employee here a while back. I know that having that kind of feel for the climate that's going on here, I've been in front of the board, I've been to the board meetings very recently, I'm still continuing to go to the board meetings, having all the projects that I've been working on going through the board and seeing them come through the board, having them come to fruition and seeing the projects go up like the EV chargers and the solar panels and the hydration stations at Public Safety and all the things that I've been working on coming through is a great experience and having those things, actually projects that I'm working on, that experience has given me the knowledge and the skills that I need to be able to see what needs to happen to make policy changes and make sure that policies are followed and the things that have to happen, the rules and regulations, I'm up to date on all that stuff and things that need to have happened fall into place. So I think that having the experience, the current experience is truly, that truly sets me apart from competition.
Okay, thank you. How would you intend to communicate with the various constituency groups on campus?
Well, so I know before the election, I would love to set up meetings, talk to them, find out what their goals are, see how close they are to meeting their goals, see if there's anything I can do to help support them. After the election, you know, I still want to be able to listen to them, see if I can help support them in any way, but I want to make sure that I am still following the rules and regulations set forth to a trustee to make sure that I'm not, you know, violating any rules. But I want to be there for everyone. I want to listen to everyone. I want to support everyone, you know, just like I was when I was an employee here. I want to make sure that everybody's needs are heard and I want to make sure everybody feels valued and that they are listened to.
Okay. All right. Here's my longest question, so let me read this.
Okay.
It's been over 11 years since classified employees had a raise. We haven't even gotten a full COLA funded by the state. We have employees whose take-home pay is $1,600 a month due to health insurance. CSA has been told by the Board of Trustees that it will not accept a Me Too clause that would foster a base pay equity for all groups. What do you intend to do to remedy this non-equity situation?
Okay, so let me preface this by saying, I was CSA, I lived this, I know exactly what this feels like. I understand completely. Being in payroll, I see this, being in payroll still, I see it and I want to make sure that every constituency group is heard. I think that if one group has a Me Too clause, they should all have a Me Too clause. I want to make sure that everyone's taken care of and I see the benefits come through and I see that when the benefits go up and your raise doesn't go up enough, you're actually bringing less money home and that hurts. You know, people can't survive on that. So I, when I see the paychecks come out and you're bringing less home, there's just no way to be able to survive on that when everything is being more expensive and, you know, you just can't do it. So I want to make sure that having raises coincide with benefit increases or some way to negotiate having things balance out so it doesn't hurt the employee. We're not in the business of hurting employees. We have to make sure it's equitable somehow. So we need to make sure that policy changes or negotiations work out in the interest of our employees. You know, it goes to the thing again of retaining our valuable employees. We have to make sure that they stay here because they are the best that we, that are around. So we need to make sure that we keep them.
One of the responsibilities of the board is to evaluate the president superintendent. What criteria would weigh most heavily on your mind in evaluating his performance?
Okay, so how they interpret and implement the policies, how they treat employees from the ones that sit across the table and help them make decisions to the ones that are pulling the weeds in the parking lot, to the ones that are emptying the trash, to the ones that are paying the bills, to the ones that are out there helping the students, to in front of the classroom. I want to make sure that he's, or she is treating everyone the same with respect, dignity and as an equal. I also, how they conduct themselves in public, especially and during school functions.
The college has a mission statement.
What makes Allen Hancock mission meaningful to you?
Well, I know Hancock is very big on the diversity. We are extremely diverse college. They give back in so many different ways and I know that for me personally, we bring in everyone from all different backgrounds. We have an exquisite education system and we produce all of these very talented and very educated individuals and back out into the education system where, or into the community that is very diverse. We bring in the students from every different economic background, different races, different, what am I trying to say, disabilities, all kinds of different things. So anyone from anywhere can come and get an education. They can come in and do anything, you know, start here, go anywhere, the motto. Some of us start here, go anywhere, come back, leave, come back again, like me. But for me, it's just, you know, the diversity, bring them in, turning them out to be contributors, great contributors to the community. And for me, that's kind of what it is. We give back to the community that gives us so much.
What would you like to improve at the college?
Well, so going back to what I said before about being on the Sustainability Committee, I've already improved a lot with the help of the Sustainability Committee, being a co-chair on that, and I kind of want to continue with that. Like I said, the EV chargers that we did, the solar panels that we've got going up, the EV chargers that are going out to Long Poak Valley. We've improved on the irrigation systems. I want to continue to promote Hancock with the same sustainability programs that we've been doing. So I want to continue with that and I also want to continue to promote the transparency between constituency groups and the admin and the staff and faculty. Uh-oh.
I'm being handed a mic.
So I want to continue to promote the transparencies and I want to continue to improve upon the services we offer.
Okay, thank you. How would you actively promote Allen Hancock College and the community?
So I've already, I already promote and I have been for a really long time being an employee of the college. Being an employee has allowed me to promote throughout the county and also up and down the state and the entire country, you know, being able to go on seminars and trainings. And being in the position that I have now with the payroll manager of Santa Barbara Unified, I'm still doing trainings and seminars and things like that. So I'm still able to promote within the education system. So that's a great way for me to be able to promote Hancock College as well. Being a trustee, I would be able to do the same thing with trainings. Also with the volunteering that I do with youth programs, with the school districts, I am on the Orchid Academy Student Advisory Council, so I'm able to do promotions within the school district there. The medias within the community itself, I'm always promoting Hancock College in one way or another.
Do you have a formal or informal list of like the top three accomplishments or things you would like to see happen in the next four years?
So we're always looking at student success. I want to make sure students have the programs and services that they need. I want them to be able to have the opportunity to advance in life and their careers. I want them to be able to have successful completion in a timely manner. I know it's not just a two-year degree anymore, it seems to be three or four. So I want to make sure that they're able to move on in their studies or progress in what they need to do in a timely manner, fit for what they need. I want to build up career and technical programs so that students can access those and have job training now that'll help them take care of their families when they need to. Fiscal responsibility is a big one. I want to be a good steward of the district's funds. I want to be able to spend responsibly, find ways to bring in funds like grants, fundraising. I know that's really hard to do right now, but you know, Hancock was just awarded a $4.3 million grant, which is huge. And our grants department is phenomenal. We've been with the Sustainability Committee, worked with them, and they've been able to find grants to supply for, again, the EV chargers and, you know, help us with that and they just do a great job. So bringing in as many grants as we possibly can that makes sense for the college and do a lot of fundraising that way. I want to have equity and unity between the students, staff, faculty and administration. I want to bridge the gap between the staff and administration. I want to better the communication between the employees and the administration. I want to recruit and retain the top-level employees like I was talking about and have better competitive job salaries. We have the excellent employees here already. I want to bring in more and be able to keep the top-level employees here to give the highest quality and levels of service to the students that we possibly can.
Okay. Well, Carrie, those are my questions, but I did want to give you a chance. You've shared a lot, but do you have any final thoughts or closing statement, as it were, you'd like to say?
Well, you know, I love Hancock. It's been a big part of my life since I've been here in the Santa Maria Valley, since I graduated high school and, you know, I love the employees, I love the students, I love the institution itself. And I'm going to really work hard for Hancock and just the level of customer service that I believe in giving to everyone here and the deep admiration I feel for the institution as a whole, for the community is just beyond words and I want to give back to Hancock that's given me so much. And trying to do this through the Board of Trustees and being able to help guide it in a path to even better success than it's already had is my way of trying to give back to it. You know, I, I think that, you know, I've probably got a lot here on my notes that I haven't said, but you know, being the employee, the student that I was, the parent of the student that I had, the one that's coming in, you know, I've seen a lot at Hancock, I've experienced a lot. I know the questions that need to be asked at the board meetings, you know, when we're going through the board book. I know, you know, I am not afraid to ask the hard questions. I think for me to be able to sit in that seat and look at the board book and say, well, why isn't this this way, or well, why don't we think about this? You know, I think that having those questions answered might be able to give the board the answers that it needs to make informed decisions and get them more information that they need to make a better decision about the way the college is going or maybe help the employees more about, well, you know, maybe we do need to look at this job description a little bit better, or maybe we do need to look at this restructure a little bit more, or why did the negotiations go this way, or why can't we do this instead of that? Or, you know, I think me having the experience that I have as an employee and the job that I have now as the Santa Barbara Unified School District Payroll Manager, I have the unique experience of bringing all the different facets together to be able to have that perspective that is just kind of the whole package. And I think that having me on the Board of Trustees is the right way to go because I love the college so much and it's just going to be the right answer to the questions that people don't know to ask. They just don't know what they don't know. But having the questions as an employee, you can't ask them at the board meeting. But now that I have the opportunity to do it, I want to. I need to be there.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Carrie.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Okay.
I've been both part-time faculty and full-time faculty. I was full-time faculty here at Hancock, and while here at Hancock, I served on almost every single committee there was, so I'm very familiar with the college, and I've stayed familiar with the college. I was on the PCPA Foundation Board for six years, and most recently in my role as an educator at Marion Hospital, I coordinated the student internships for our nursing and other medical-related fields. I have a doctorate degree in educational leadership and change, and I also was a school board member in Santa Barbara for a K-6 district. So it's something that's been in my blood for a long time.
Okay, thank you. What motivates you to be a trustee?
That started when I was 12 years old, actually. A neighbor of mine got elected, and I asked my mom what it was all about, and she, I thought, "That sounds very interesting." I ran for the student trustee position while I was in college. I was not elected, that's okay. And then I had been a trustee in a K-6 district, but when it came time for me to run again, I had to really think about, "Where is my heart? Is it with the elementary? Is it with high school?" And I realized it's Hancock. I've always stayed connected to the college. I have many friends who still work here, and I know what's going on with the college and with the community, and I want to give back to the community. So Hancock is what it is.
Okay. What would you say differentiates you from your competitor in this race? If you can be specific with examples of things you think would bring a positive result to the Hancock community?
Well, I know what we have in common is that we've both been students here, we both worked here, which is great. I have a lot of community experience, a lot of community board experience. I've been the president of the Children's Museum, I'm currently the treasurer of the Orchid Children's Arts Foundation. I've been with a lot of groups, so I know a lot of the segments of this community and how they interact with the college. I also, as I said, have the education that allows me to look at issues in a different way. I've been attending the Board of Trustees meetings online since I've gone online, and even some in person before then, so I'm very aware of the issues that are currently facing the college. And I think I have a really good rapport with everyone, and I think that there's a lot I could contribute.
Okay. How would you communicate with the various constituency groups on the campus?
I feel like I'm always available to talk to someone. I'd be happy to give my email address right now. When someone sees me at an event, I'd love for them to come up to me and talk to me. I know that the board has had open office hours in the past, they haven't been doing it during COVID, but I think that'd be a fun thing to participate in, and I'm open to listening to everyone. So I think there's a lot of opportunities for people to talk. And that being said, I'm one person in a five-member board, so what is really important is that these groups reach all of us because we're all part of the decision-making process.
Okay. Would you have any goals as trustee, particularly things that have not been done before?
Hancock's existed for 100 years. What hasn't been done? I don't have any really specific goal. I think that as trustee, it's important for me to support the institutional goals, the Educational Master Plan, what the staff and faculty sees needs to be achieved. It's not my role to come in and tell everyone else what to do, it's my role to support what everyone else is doing. Of course, I want to make sure the college maintains its excellence and continues to be fiscally responsible. So I think my goal would be to make sure we're still doing the great job we're already doing.
Okay. Now, one of the responsibilities of a board member is to evaluate the president's superintendent. What criteria would you use in making that evaluation of his or her performance?
Well, the criteria is probably written into his contract. I haven't seen his contract, so I don't know, but I know that there's going to be procedures and things in his contract that tell the board how to evaluate him. And just like any faculty member, there's goals that the president and the college have set out to achieve, so we have to measure the effectiveness against the goals that have already been established.
Okay, okay. Of course, the college has a mission statement. What makes Allen Hancock's mission meaningful to you?
I thought about that, and I thought, first of all, I don't know if the people who've been here before me share the mission statement with everybody in Zoom land, so first I want to read it to you. Allen Hancock College provides quality educational opportunities that enhance student learning and the creative, intellectual, cultural, economic vitality of our diverse community. So first, I've been a student. I've taken non-credit classes, primarily in sewing, and I now am the costumer for one of the local high schools' productions. I've taken credit classes, one of them is in American Sign Language, but I am not good at it at all. And I know that this college reaches all segments of our community. We are the only game in town for 40 miles in any direction. It's not like we're plopped in the middle of the San Fernando Valley. So we need to ensure that we're offering and covering the needs of everyone, be them
Well, welcome.
credit, non-credit, community feed-based classes, be them transfer classes or technical education classes. I mean, besides the different types of class opportunity, we're also the cultural center for the town. We have the Ann Foxworthy Arts Gallery, we have PCPA. So this mission, the last two words of it is what's most important to me, diverse community. We have a very diverse community, and we need to continue to make sure we're meeting the needs of everyone in our community because they really don't have anyplace else to go.
Okay, thank you. Now, this is the longest question, so I'm going to read it. It's been over 11 years since classified employees have had a raise. We haven't even gotten a full COLA funded by the state. We have employees whose take-home pay is $1,600 a month due to health insurance. CSAA has been told that the Board of Trustees will not accept a "me-too" clause that would foster a base pay equity for all groups. What would you do to remedy this non-equity issue?
Well, again, I'm one of five people, so I personally can't remedy anything, but I would encourage us to do some more research because I do understand this is a concern. I met both with the Part-Time Faculty Association and the classified staff recently, and they both expressed that issue. One of the things we can do is our research. For example, look at where all the different groups are in relation to the other colleges in the state of California. If we have some groups that are way up here in the pay scale and some groups are way down here in the pay scale, obviously that's not an equitable situation. We can also look at communities that are similar to ours. We cannot compare ourselves to Marin County, for example, but there's probably a lot of other colleges in communities like ours that we can see exactly what's going on there. And I think once we've done the research and have all the information, we'll be able to make really informed decisions as a board. And I do personally feel that equity is very important.
Okay, well, thank you. What would you like to improve at the college?
Yeah, I don't come in with an agenda. I feel like it's my job to listen to the constituencies. So it's my job to hear what the students need. The faculty are the experts in their curriculum, so we have to let the faculty be the experts. The most of student services, I don't even know in detail what they do, and then the support staff are the people that are holding everybody else up. So I feel like they're the ones that know best about what needs to make the college better, and they need to be willing to bring up their concerns and talk to us and help us identify what these needs are. The college goes through a planning process every few years, and this is, again, is the opportunity to bring up what the needs are to the college and make sure everyone is on base with what has to improve. So I would support the improvements that I am seeing coming through all the other college processes.
Okay, okay. You mentioned in reading the mission statement about the diverse community. How would you actively promote the college in the community?
Promoting the college is something that I've always done. I've always stayed connected with the college, so I know what's going on, whether I'm talking to the students that are in the plays I'm doing costumes for, and if they're looking for a future in theater, I tell them about PCPA. When I was at Marion Hospital, and I would talk to a lot of people who wanted eventual medical career, I would tell them, "Look at Hancock first. It's close, and it's a lot cheaper than going anyplace else." So I think that reaching out to the students, to their families, is what's really important. There might be a young kid who's a teaker, you know, in the old days he would have taken apart our lawn mowers and put them back together, and now he's taking apart our computers and putting them back together. Is he even aware of the career opportunities for somebody like that? So we're already doing a good job because we have our different events for the fifth to eighth graders and the high school kids, but we really need to make sure to reach these kids and to reach the parents and tell them that college is affordable, we've got the Hancock promise, and that we're working on doing what we can to make it achievable for everybody.
Do you have a list, formal or informal, of like the top three goals or accomplishments you would like to see happen if you were elected?
Okay, I kind of referred to some of them already, but that's great. I read the Educational Master Plan that Dr. Curry and Dr. Ornellis and Dr. Murphy shared last week, and there are two things in particular that stood out for me from that master plan. One of them was reaching the traditionally marginalized communities, which are the people I was just talking about. You know, we need to go into those communities and talk to the families when the children are really young to tell them what the college can do for us. Another one had to do with flexible scheduling. We, there's many barriers to students getting an education, and not just financial. They may be working, they may have a family, they might not be able to get online, they might not be able to get to the college. So looking at what these barriers are for the students and addressing those has become really, really important to our community. And then my last goal, which I already mentioned, has to do with equity in employment practices. I was in a situation in one of my jobs where my office mate was making three times as much as I was, simply because she had a different degree than I had. And, you know, I know what it's like not to be in a situation, or I should say, to be in a situation where you don't feel like you're being treated equally. So I am very concerned with that topic.
Okay, well, thanks. Well, those are my questions, and I appreciate, you know, you've given us a lot of information, but I wanted to give you a chance if you have any final thoughts or closing statement, as it were, that you would like to make.
Well, I have a lot of friends who have told me that I am a really good listener and that I consider every side to an opinion when it's told to me. I do appreciate people coming to me that have a different opinion than I've had because it forces me to look at the situation differently. So I do think that as a trustee, I will be listening to the community and listening to the college about what it is that they need us to do, and I also think, having been involved with the college so intimately for 30 years, I will be able to do a lot to educate the other four trustees as to what it's like to be working at the college or to be a student at the college, to better inform the decisions that we're all making.
Okay. Well, thank you, Suzanne, and that concludes our discussion.
Thank you, Roger.
Good luck.
Thank you, everyone.